I'll call that meeting to order and make the comment that the meeting is being held via Zoom. And either Mike or Andy, put in the legal stuff there, whatever we need at the start of the meeting that it's being recorded and all that sort of stuff.
Yep.
Okay, good. Alright, first order of business is the acceptance and approval of minutes of the meeting for January. You received copy of those minutes. Is there any additions, corrections, or deletions? If not, I'll make a motion that they be accepted. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by John. Okay, all those in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, minutes are accepted. Any communications, Andy?
Uh, no, no.
Is there any member of the public other than planning board people that either are present or want to make a comment? No, okay. Alright, moving then right along to general municipal law two thirty-nine M referrals. And the gentleman from Dexter is the first one signed in, so go ahead. Andy, who's gonna do that one? Just let me know who's speaking.
Okay, yep, I'm, I'm starting that with that one. Um, this needs to, need to hit a button or two here. So do we see it on our screens now, the Village of Dexter?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. So this project is, um, the applicant is the Dexter Historical Society and the Dexter Volunteer Fire Department. They're proposing to construct a twenty-six by thirty-eight foot building to display its antique firetruck and other memorabilia. And the project is located on the corner of East Kirby and New York State Route one eighty. It is, um, a special use permit in the R-one residential district in the Village of Dexter. Um, so it's considered an accessory building, but that, that is a special use permit in that zone for some reason. And, um, let's see, so here's the aerial photograph. So you got one eighty along here and then East Kirby. And they're occupying right now, I think it used to be a church and that's where the museum is now. And, um, so the storage building will be right over here, so this parking area won't be affected by it. And this is a Google Street View image of the, um, museum as it was probably a few years ago. And the storage building will be in this location here. And, uh, this shows the rear of the current structure and the parking area. Uh, but when I show you the, um, site plan, you'll see that that's gonna be, um, formalized a little bit more here. So here's the site plan submitted. And again, you got East Kirby here and then Route one eighty over here. And this is the parking area, which you can see here that they'll show, um, they're gonna have, again, I think a few more spaces once they put the gravel down and so on. And, um, this is, the pink is the new storage building or displayed structure, however you wanna, whatever you wanna call it. And, um, I couldn't really tell what it'll look like. Um, there was no rendering submitted with it to show that. Um, and I wasn't sure if this is that actual connection to the museum building or not. Um, so I may be coloring this wrong, but this is the general location of it and the dimensions as I was saying before. Um, so we only had two comments. Oh, I'm sorry, this is a house that's nearby, next door on the next property. Um, but our two comments, uh, consist of the local board should request a rendering sketch or facade view of the proposed storage building design to ensure it's compatible with the historic museum building's design. So just to clarify that, you know, this, this structure has a certain character to it, um, as you can tell. And sometimes, you know, I, I was just hoping that the, the new building would sort of, not, not mirror it, but obviously hopefully not affect its, um, character, if that makes sense at all. So it's just sort of a recommendation to that. Um, and then the other comment, I'm sorry, here's, here's the staff report. The other comment involves, uh, lighting. I didn't see that it was proposed to have any lighting. But if there was any proposed, that it should be dark sky compliant and, and designed to limit potential glare onto adjacent public roads and any, and the residential areas nearby. Um, we, we do have a project representative, Jerry Kostick, on the call as well, so, um, I don't know if he has anything to add or clarify.
Any, is any other, uh, staff member got questions or comments? And the applicant?
Yeah, yes, sir. There is a rendering out there. I'm sorry that didn't get to you and, uh, we, we fully intend to, um, mirror the appearance of the existing building. Uh, there'll, there'll be vinyl clapboard siding. And, uh, the new building will actually have, uh, I don't know, do they call it a widow's watch or cupola on top to, make it more aesthetically pleasing.
Okay. Yeah, I, I went through the packet. I couldn't find anything, but we probably just didn't get a copy.
I can, I can send that up to, to put your mind at ease. I can send that along to Andy when I get done and, uh, he can pass it along to the board.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else, Andy?
Um, no, no.
Okay. Uh, alright, staff has made recommendation that this is a project of local concern only. And with our comments to go back to the, uh, village there, make that motion. Is there a second?
Second, Lisa.
Okay, Lisa, thank you. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Uh, this'll go back to, uh, the village there for whatever final, uh, they have to do as far as your application, sir.
Okay, and thank you very much.
Okay, good. Thanks for, thanks for coming in. Alright.
Thank you.
Then let's go in numerical order, uh, from now on, Andy's.
Okay.
Okay, uh, going back to page one?
Yes. Yeah, so the first project, or I should say the next project is, um, uh, in the town of Clayton and it's, uh, proposed by Boat House Marine LLC. And they're proposing, uh, a cold storage building on the south side of, um, State Route twelve, just east of the village. Um, and it is going to be a hundred by a hundred and twenty foot cold storage building. And, and they'll also park boat trailers outside during the summer. And it's located on Carrier Lane. So here, uh, and then Route twelve is just, just, um, connecting to Carrier Lane. So the yellow parcel is a new parcel and that's where the storage building will be. And, um, it is a site plan review you, well, I'm sorry, it's proposed as a site plan review in the district. Uh, we do have comments about that, but just to keep going, it's, it's also within the, um, agricultural rural residential district. And, um, on Route twelve at this location is part of the Great Lakes Seaway Trail as well. And it's within the town scenic overlay district. Um, you can see from the aerial that part of this has vineyards or vines on it. Um, so that's just sort of a noteworthy thing. And there are homes along, uh, Carrier Lane. And, um, across the street on twelve, and there's some businesses as well, obviously. This, um, marina here, um, so it's sort of a mixed use area, but it's, um, you know, there's some considerations there with other uses. Um, so I'm just zoomed, I've zoomed in a little bit here showing the parcel that will, um, have the storage building on it. And this was, I took this out the, the other day, probably last week or so. Um, so the parcel sort of goes, this is like the corner of it. And, um, so those are the vineyards. I mean, obviously in the winter, they don't look like much. But, um, that's, this is where the site, that's how it looks. Um, this is back up away from twelve and so that corner, I took the pictures down here. So this is on the other side, so you're looking across that toward the river. Um, so here's the site plan they submitted and it, um, shows the building. They're gonna construct a hundred by a hundred and twenty or so and with a gravel driveway and the garage doors are here. Um, and then this is where the boat trailer parking will be. And it says it'll be mowed, so that's not gonna be gravel. It's just gonna be grass area there. And, um, it does show the vineyard, general vineyard location, so it'll impact those areas. I'm not sure if they're planning on keeping them at all in, in here or not. Um, but those are the two vineyard areas. Um, trying to think if there was some other point I was gonna make. Oh, yeah, so the next, uh, image shows some trees spaced, uh, twenty, twenty feet apart along the building. This is the side that faces twelve toward this way. And, um, so you, you can see sort of, this is like a panel that some of those big buildings have to let light in. Um, and then this is a gravel driveway and two doors here. So it's sort of, it, it has landscaping proposed. Um, okay, so I'm gonna keep going here. So we were noting that the town zoning law's definition of small commercial enterprise includes boat storage operations and, and so they are permitted within that district upon issuance of a special use permit. However, the town is reviewing this application as a self-storage facility. But when you look at that definition, it, it includes small private storage areas inside a building, which this is not. This is just gonna be one cavernous building, which I assume is gonna have boats stored in it. So we're just noting that the town should consider following the small commercial review procedure, which allows boat storage. So then, from then on, our comments sort of relate to the special use permit standard. Cause if they send this back to us, we wanna have already addressed those standards. So specifically, we're saying that the design of the building could be made less conspicuous or less commercial looking by adding windows, even false windows on a facade that faces New York State Route twelve. Um, also pursuant to this town scenic overlay protection district language, um, landscaping regulations, the local board should request the proposed row of trees along that building, uh, facing the Seaway Trail, that they should be modified to meet the standard of ninety feet of continuous green buffer. That, that's what their overlay calls for. And then we say similarly, the local board should request, uh, buffering and screening for any outdoor storage to limit the view of stored items from Route twelve and the homes in close proximity to the project. Then I was noting that currently a vineyard occupies part of the parcel. Vines not impacted by construction and parking could be retained as part of a buffer. And then there again, we comment on lighting about, uh, any proposed lighting should be shielded to limit glare onto the public roadways and nearby residential properties. They're not calling for white, uh, any electric, electrical to the building. Um, but we just wanna caution them on any lights that they may wanna do. Um, so that's what I had. Any comments or questions?
Where is that ninety?
Is this within an ag district?
Uh, you know what? I forgot to look at that. Um, I will check.
Yes, I, yeah, please do. If we got agricultural land, agriculture production, I just wanted to make sure. So that's gonna be an issue.
Right, yeah, I mean, looking at the, um, vineyard, I wouldn't call this a big one, but it certainly is a vineyard, so I'll have to double check that.
I, and what's the rest of the land being used? Is it just vacant?
Um, well, this is a, yeah, around it. Well, no, I mean, there's homes along here. Uh, this is a house. This is, was a commercial, uh, like a party store or something we reviewed previously. It wasn't open when I went by. Um, and then there's boat, um, marinas and boat storage. And there's other stor, boat storage buildings closer to the village. It's sort of a mixed use area, but as you can see here, some of it is agricultural in character.
Um, Andy, this is Sarah. Uh, I looked it up. It, it's not in an ag district.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yep.
There, there was another question starting right as you started, George.
Yeah, I, I'm, and just asking, what is that ninety foot barrier? Where is that?
Oh, so in the scenic overlay district, it calls for a ninety foot vegetated buffer, like green, greenness. I think that would, uh, limit the views, visual impact from the scenic byway. So that, I'm just noting that that's a requirement and that they should make sure that, you know, that they've judged it based on that.
Is from Route twelve then, or from their property line?
Um, well, when I, when I hear the word ninety foot vegetated buffer, it's wherever the property is. So to me, it would be in this area here. Um, now this is only twenty-five foot setback, so they would either need to move the building or somehow, you know, meet that requirement. Uh, if, if the town wants to really follow through with that. And again, that's up to the town.
Those scenic byway things don't, uh, supersede local zoning?
Well, that is in their zoning law, so it's, it's part of their zoning. They've adopted like over and above their, their existing regulations within, uh, I think five hundred feet of the scenic byway. I forget the exactual dimensions, but it, it includes this whole parcel.
Well, just,
So.
Just make a note that the, you know, the town should either waive that or figure out where the ninety feet is.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Okay.
Yep.
Anybody else? Questions, comments? Okay. Uh, again, staff has made recommendation that this is a project of local concern. I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Charlene. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion's carried. Okay. Okay, that goes back to the town, right, Andy?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, so the next project is in the town of Orlean. And it is proposed by the, oh, my arrow's gone. It's proposed by the Durand Brothers LLC. They're, um, proposing to renovate and reopen a vacant convenience store. And it's on Wells the Island, uh, right here on the corner of County Route one hundred and Cross Island Road. So the northeast corner right there. And that is a site plan review in the business district. And we're seeing it because it's on that county road. So here's the project, uh, location. I'm sorry, I didn't label the roads. This is, um, County Route one hundred this way, and then this is Cross Island Road here. And this is, uh, the fire station we reviewed a few years ago, so that's completed. And, let's see, th- this is a number of boat storage operations, which we've also reviewed. But this is a, this convenience store that's vacant right now. There is a double wide trailer here and that'll be removed, but you'll see that in the photos too. Uh, and you can see that this looks like pavement and then this is more like a gravelly dirt gravel stuff over here. So here's the Google Street View image that shows the project location. And it looks like it used to be a Sunoco and, uh, when this was taken. And there's actually three openings on the county road, one here, two and three. Um, I did speak to County Highway. They said there were no incidents here. They're, they're fine with how this is. Uh, so if they don't change anything, they're, they're fine with the project. Uh, this is the picture I took the other day, so it's, um, that's how it is was last week. You can see they're, they're plowing it, but, and they're probably working inside or about to. Uh, so this is like the main entrance here. Um, this is, this is, shows the, um, trailer and whatever this is. This'll all be removed. It's just gonna be a cement pad underneath this part here. Um, so this is the existing site plan, which again shows the, the three, um, entrances on County Route one hundred. And this is the campy in the building and that house there. Um, existing business signs here. One business sign here, which, uh, is not on the property, so they'll need to remove that. So here's the proposed, uh, site plan, again with the three entrances. Um, and you can see the, um, parking and gravel over here is more formalized to probably get the right number of parking spaces. But it'll look largely very similar. Um, you know, it looks like the entrance might add these little features over the doorways. Um, but I would say that it's gonna be very similar. And, um, so the, this sign here, that's a business sign. That's one of our comments, is that should be removed. Um, so I did note that any modification to the County Route one hundred right of way should be approved by Jefferson County Highway. Um, also, the proposed site plan shows existing business signage within the county right of way, which should be removed. Proposed signage should meet any town of Orlean sign regulations, especially following step back requirement. And lastly, any proposed lighting should be shielded to minimize potential glare under the public highway and any adjacent properties. Um, so that's, that's all I had on it.
Questions, comments? Someone said something?
Yeah.
Um, it says renovate and reopen a vacant convenience store. Is that going to also include the gas pump?
Oh, well, yes, yes, I'm sorry. I'd probably, I was following the wording they indicated. I probably should have added that. So, yeah, it'll, it'll hold gas.
I didn't know if there's any requirements with those two or not.
Um, well, there, there are, I mean, the, um, it says here, existing underground storage, fuel storage tanks to be replaced, so they're gonna put new ones in.
Okay.
So you're saying maybe like a DEC comment?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, that, that's a good comment, yeah. D E C, um, fuel tank permit or whatever. I'll, I'll find out what the wording is.
Yeah, D, DEC has control of underground storage facilities like that, so they'd, uh, contact them to remove the old one and make sure the new one is, meets their standards.
Okay. Very good.
Anybody else? Okay, questions, comments? Again, staff has made recommendation that this is a project of local concern only, with our comments to go back to the town. I'll make that motion. Is there a second? Somebody, John? Okay.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion is carried. Moving on to number four.
Okay. Yep, just gotta transition here. Go ahead, Sarah.
Oh, can you hear me now?
Now I can, yeah.
Okay, sorry, I was muted. Um, okay, this is Sarah, hello.
Hello.
Um, can you see the screen, Andy?
Yes, you're good.
Okay. Um, just looking for my print pointer. Okay, there we go. All right, first up, we have Town of Watertown one dash twenty-two. This is a site plan review for two storage buildings. Gonna be located, um, out in the industrial park, um, out by Coffeen Street, Route twelve S and Interstate eighty-one. We have Fisher Road, which is technically County Route one ninety-six. Um, the address is gonna be twenty-two six two zero, County Route one ninety-six. Let's see, um, here is the interstate, here's Black River. Um, this is Route twelve S, Coffeen Street, and if you turn here, this is County Route one ninety-six, which is Fisher Road. You head all the way into the back of the Jefferson County Industrial Park and the project site is gonna be the second to last one on the right. This is called Metal Craft Marine. Um, where I think they manufacture boats in here. Um, you can see the surrounding land use is a mix of industrial and manufacturing and offices. This is a zoomed in version of the aerial photo. Um, here is Metal Craft Marine. And you can see they have their main driveway right here, um, with parking in the front. But they also have access here along their north side. And it looks like they might even access from the neighboring parcel to the south, um, with a lot of gravel in the back where they park stuff. Um, this project site is zoned neighborhood commercial, which allows light manufacturing with site plan review. Uh, this is a Google, uh, street image. Um, you can tell that because there's no snow. Um, but here's the main driveway. The parking is in the front of the building. Um, right along the south side, you can go around the back of the building. Um, get some current photos. Uh, this is taken, this is on the north side of the building. Um, this is that driveway that kind of is shared with the parcel also to the north. And it comes back here and then you turn in to get to these garages in the back. The proposed storage buildings are gonna be way back here, like in the back left. Uh, I'll show you on the site plan. This is what it looks like in the front. You got the parking and the main driveway. Um, this is the site plan where you have Fisher Road down on the bottom and Interstate eighty-one is gonna be up here on the top. Um, you have the main driveway in the front with the parking in the front. And then you can go around the back with the, the gravel, takes you in the back here. The existing structure is shown in orange and the proposed structures are shown in pink. They're, um, they should be the same. Um, they are in the northeast corner. And they should be twenty feet by forty feet in size, both of them. And they do meet the setback. Um, the, this is what they look like. It's, um, they have a ten foot roll-up door in the front. And this is called a steel arch structure. Um, and it is mounted on a concrete Um, and it is mounted on a concrete foundation. And they've got construction planned for the spring. In terms of comments, uh, Jefferson County building permit is required. And the site plan should depict all the existing conditions. Um, in particular, it should identify the parking areas and the existing gravel. And the proposed lighting, if it is applicable, if there is lighting, it should be dark sky compliant. And in regards to those storage buildings, um, the lighting should not spill over onto the interstate. Um, that's it. Any questions on that one?
Scat, staff, any questions, comments? If not, again, staff has made recommendation that this is a project of local concern only. And I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Lisa or Deb, Deb?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, project is. All right, moving on to the number five.
Okay, the next one.
Wait a minute, Sarah.
You're gonna have, I know you're going to not vote, right?
But make sure, do we still have a quorum if, if I don't vote?
I believe so.
Has George left yet? No, he's still there, okay.
George is here and
Let's get close.
Okay.
Okay, do it really quickly.
Okay, go to it, Jerry.
This is a moratorium. Um, it's a one-year moratorium on commercial solar farms, um, also called solar energy systems in the town of Watertown. It does not include the solar energy, the large-scale projects that would go through the state's citing review board. Um, for, um, moratoriums, our comments would be, uh, the local board should ensure the proposed moratorium meets New York State DOC, DOS criteria for land use moratorium prior to adoption, and the criteria includes have a reasonable timeframe as measured by the action to be accomplished. Have a public purpose justifying the moratorium. Address the situation where the burden imposed by the moratorium is shared by the public at large. Strictly adhere to the procedure for adoption laid down by the Enabling Act. And have a certain time when the moratorium will expire. That's it on that. You guys have any questions?
All right, so, uh, the, the moratorium was proposed or prepared by our, uh, town attorney, so I guess those issues are settled. So, so, someone make a motion for approval, please?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Cheryl or Charlene? Is there a second to Charlene there? John? Uh, okay, uh, motion has been made and seconded, uh, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Make sure it's indicated that I abstained. Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, so David, can I just clarify the motion on Metal Craft Marine? You actually made the, the initial motion. Could I get someone else to make that one?
I will.
I don't, you know, I'm fine with, uh, the Metal Craft project. Cause that, that's just going back to our, our planning work, right? Yeah.
Function of planning.
Okay, I thought you abstained on that one. All right, my bad.
Nice, I stayed, I got no problem with that one. It's just that, uh, you know, I've already voted on the, uh, uh, moratorium, so.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Um, no, I get, not, not as far as project.
Excuse me, Andy, what?
I said not as far as the project, but I would say the, whatever allows us to do the virtual, you know, may change in the middle of March, so we'll just have to keep, we'll keep tracking that and let you know about virtual meetings from moving forward. I know Mike was thinking about ending them, but I think they're good for quorum, so I'm not sure if we'll arm wrestle or what by next month.
Okay, well, you, you and Mike make those determinations and let us know what we gotta do. Okay?
Okay, will do.
George, you got it? Okay, good.
I'm all set.
Okay, good.
Thank you for, uh, expediting the meeting.
All right, thanks, George.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Lisa, make a motion, please.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thanks, everybody. Appreciate your participation.
Thank you.
Okay, bye now.
Thank you, bye.